Uh, I come up with this Hill Grant Town Council order. Uh, I guess we got a quorum, about three town members. Alright, um.
It's game time.
We'll begin with a moment of silence and remember, remember Carrie's wife, what she's doing. Alright, join with me. Thank you. Alice, do you please?
Please say please to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic or religious states. One nation, under God, and with Israel, with liberty and justice for all.
Review and adoption of the agenda. So look over it, where we got, why don't you go ahead and tell you the changes. Okay, we're leaving off, alright, seven A, we're leaving off about the auditorium, but we are adding, seven A, we're adding Kevin.
We're adding what?
Code enforcement.
So, if I want to make a motion.
I'll make the motion of, uh, adopt the agenda.
Alright, all in favor? Thank you. Approval of minutes, February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, regular meeting minutes and March sixth, twenty-twenty-five, special meeting minutes. Look over those and make a motion whenever you're ready.
We don't have to do this one for those all of them. You have to have two separate lines. So I have a question on the morning six, uh, on page three, under the miscellaneous thing we were talking about for the auditorium. Um, are we agreeing there to keep the existing lights and sound system? Is that something we're taking off of things we're going to do?
Uh, in terms of, so on page three, where, where?
On the mark, mark six, special meeting, page three, halfway down the page, the miscellaneous.
So the existing, the existing lighting and sound system, it was not in the, uh, it was not in the scope of work for the contractors to do new lighting and sound. That can be something we look at, it would be, it would obviously add to the contract cost, but it is something that if you're looking to do, uh, I will say, now we don't have the contract ready or not, but there is, I think, seventy-five hundred in contingencies, but I would, I would probably better get a chunk of my salary, that won't cover, that won't cover that, uh. But that, that's something we can ask about if council is in agreement to, to look at either once we sign the contract and want to look to get it in, or, um, if you want to do that outside of this contract, once we're finished.
I'm thinking that, uh, people renting it will probably be more concerned with that than cup holders, so. I know the last movie that was shown in there, they couldn't get the sound to work correctly.
And I've already had one group asking me about a more, uh, user-friendly lighting system. I think that's two of the most important things for people renting out to escape. So, yeah, I don't want to just mark that off, that what I'm going to do it. I think it needs to be one of the first, two of the first things that they can do to have.
So one of the things will be to ensure that, this is the only thing I know for sure that's in the current scope, is to move the current setup from its existing location to the new, uh, to the new, uh, sound lighting area, but if we want to replace the existing, uh, are we talking about the physical hardware of the lights or just the software system, the interface? Or is it both?
Well, we need to make sure it's not kicking off everything.
Now, that we'll stay in there, we, we did mention that, uh, the current breaker system is kicking off, that would have to be something that's added to it.
At least make sure that it's all working properly.
Okay.
If electrician says it's working fine, let me call him, I'll explain.
Yeah, again, we turned it on, but eventually it takes a minute.
It takes about fifteen minutes for it to kick off.
Okay, so that.
When electricians will come in there and say, oh, it's working fine.
That we have mentioned before, that's putting into the contract to review that, but adding a new sound system or, uh, i- is it the physical lights themselves or the software of the lights that, or is it just the electrical that's running?
Yeah, the electrical, ma- just make sure that and the sound are working the way they're supposed to be working.
We can, we can discuss that, yeah, absolutely, and put that in. Is that a council vote, or are you just?
No, we, electrician deserves the panels that have already included, right? So it would be his responsibility or?
Well. I guess to ensure that they're working properly, yes, i- if there's any electrical issues, we've already asked them to add that in there, but to change the actual systems themselves is not, is not. So if you, like, if you're wanting new lights or different locations or new lighting, no, just to make sure the ones you've got there are currently working, we can, yeah, we've asked to add that.
So I'll make a motion of approval of minutes. All in favor? Thank you. Yes, any public comment? Okay, no public comment? Okay, six, uh, special presentation, consider approval of proclamation for line worker appreciation, appreciation day. Is there anyone here to accept the proclamation? Then I don't, I don't have to read it, right? That's a lot to read, I can't read hardly. Alright, but we are going to vote on it, so. I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation for line workers appreciation day. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, seven, old business, uh, instead of, uh, seven A, instead of the, uh, auditorium renovation, I'm talking about, uh.
They got some.
No.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement, I couldn't think of that. Crowd, I was thinking crowd control, that's not yet.
We'll give you a quick report, the quarterly report, when you're looking at it, there's not a whole lot of resolve that has taken place, the time this report was put together. Um, due to some of the weather issues, and there's a, quite a few things on there that's going to take more than just a month for people to correct based on their things. As far as the monthly review, there's been things added to it as of today, um, forward to be exact, that has probably going to need more attention than just a couple of weeks as well. Um, it's slowly coming together and slowly is emphasized big here, but there's a little bit of progress being forced as well, so. I just wanted to touch base with everyone, I know we hadn't seen each other since December. Happy New Year, even though we're three months in till it almost four, starting next Tuesday, right? April fourth, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'll leave that with you folks. Thank you.
Alright, seven B, discussion of event planner position. What do you want to go?
So, the last meeting, council wanted to vote to have a, like, a hiring committee with the two council members and two planning board members. Uh, Jared and I talked, it's, uh, most of the, the legal framework, and Jared, you correct me if I'm wrong here, most of the language in the general statutes, when it refers to council members and definitely outside, uh, folks who aren't part of the, uh, organization, that language is geared towards employees, not potential hires. So, basically what I'm coming back to council for is, uh, if you, if you can't be part of the actual interview process in terms of reviewing applications, being in the interview itself, how, how do you want to proceed with, uh, the hiring of the position?
Well, we still would like to have some input on the questions that are asked.
Assuming that we've got no issue with that.
You're going to make them require, uh, resumes and stuff like that, list and all the experience and things that they have, uh, references for what you're on with that plan and stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we just need to, if we've got questions, write it out and give it to you, is that what we need to do?
Yes, and what I'll do, I'll work with, uh, Jared just to review them to make sure that, you know, those are, those are the questions we need to, you know, make sure they're legal. Assuming they are, absolutely.
And that, that's part of the problem, is we do have resumes and other things that would be employee protected records that we're not really able to share with those of the public, really council, um, council can hire an attorney and all that's an open, open book, council can hire a town manager, and I believe a clerk as well, but other than that, employees are very protected, and that's sort of what we keep running up against in trying to open the, you know, open it up to let council be involved. Uh, this fall, and this form of government, it forms, falls on Logan, uh, as the manager for hiring and firing, and we were trying to find ways to open that up, and there's not really a great way to do it without exposing us to some trouble, potential trouble. Um, other than, you know, we were talking about inviting questions, uh, and certainly if the board wanted to submit those, I know we talked about that was something that, yeah, as long as you don't ask somebody about, um, you know, if they expect to get pregnant or something like that, or some other illegal question, you know, for example.
I, I don't plan to.
Am I correct that after the person is hired, then the council can look at the applications?
Not the applications themselves.
Okay.
Because then it would still be sort of protected.
Okay.
At that point, but then if you went into closed session about the performance of employee, then at that point, this is a little different.
Well, I know when I was hired five thousand years ago, when the council people came in and looked at mine, so I guess that's changed.
Well, I think once you're hired, you follow, all of the, well, the language I read says employee, and so once you're an employee, you transition a lot, now, again, I still think there's some things that may be protected even as an employee, but generally, those records, now they're employee records, and so you're under a whole different set of language.
That is a kind of public information.
I think the large.
Well, to, to, to some, yeah, personal record is still protected, still closed session, the exception to that being town attorney, town manager, and I think town clerk, I'm not sure. But, but definitely Logan and I are at a different level, I'm at a completely different level, everything with me has to be the other. So if you, you can't possibly be in closed session, you have to possibly.
Okay.
Please do this.
Is that all of the event planner? Okay. What's the timeframe on the, on that, when do you start, when are you planning on start the interview, when do we have to have questions in to you, so?
Yeah.
Do you see that are asked?
Knowing this, it would, it would be good to have them in by next Monday, that way that gives me, you know, as quickly as you can get them to me, give me and Jared a week to look at them, revise them, then we'll start planning.
Is that an email or something, we have to bring like a letter form or what?
Uh, it's.
Another emails, public information.
Well, and that's the thing, if it, if it's just a question you're proposing, again, you're not, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think you would be infringing on anything, I mean.
No, there are exceptions to public record disclosure for things like that, for many reasons, so, I mean, we have disclosed the questions perhaps after we hired somebody, but, you know, prior to that, it's like economic development, there are certain things that are protected while they're in the process. So if you want to email some questions, obviously that'd be a problem, and then, and Logan would just put them in the order that made sense.
Okay, discussion of leveling Royal Park.
We're leveling it.
Good deal, big deal.
Any, any concerns, it seemed to be a big concern after the last meeting, but ju- just to give you some insight, the, uh, there was a current layout that was performed by D E I, that was an engineered specific layout, uh, they used a, I don't know the correct term for it, but an automated, uh, automated leveller. Went out there, it had a laser line, and it told the machine, okay, here you're high, here you're low, what, what out? So that, the current layout was the design layout. There may have been a couple of low spots that we're going to have to address, but, uh, within the existing contract, it's not going to raise the contract to, um, uh, to do the leveling that we're doing, that, there was backfill, imported fill, flowable fill, all of that was included as contingencies in the contract. If you happen to use those, those would have been, uh, well, we would never pay for them in the contract price when it came down. So it's not going to add to your final line, is what I'm saying, do what you're doing. Other than that, if you have any questions, let me know, but, uh, they're gonna, what's going to happen right now is, uh, Duke Energy is in the process of putting their lines in for the street lamps, we're having to get some areas located by, um, a private locate eight-one-one, that would do from the meter, uh, out to their road, everything in between is something we have to have located. So we have a locator coming out tomorrow to look at one section down from the gym in front of the, uh, stage, coming from the gym to the, the new stage. Once that's located, Duke can, um, Duke can dig, if they hit something and it's marked, it's on them. If they hit something that's not marked, it's on us, so we, we want to mark. Um, but anyway, so they'll, they'll be out tomorrow, uh, hopefully they can finish up this, this week or early next week, and then the leveling can begin immediately after that. Uh, I do think, one thing you want to consider, and we talked about it with the events committee, is in terms of an event, in terms of a grand opening or attaching it to like a, an H H D A cruise in, what is the quality of that ground and that grass going to be in May versus June? Uh, I think the issue you're going to run into is in May, it's not probably quite ready, and in June, they say grass planting in the spring dies, the second it starts to get hot and dry, so I, I can't tell you which one would be, you know, I, we think June would be better if you're looking to have some type of celebration to open it as part of a cruise in, but we also know fireworks are done in May, and that's more of your bigger, bigger problem.
Biggest one, yeah.
So unless they want to move fireworks back, or you're just cool with doing our part, again, I, I don't think there's any requirement that we have a certain crowd size or fireworks or no fireworks added, it's just, you need to have, you need to have a grand opening day, and we can go ahead and open the park before that, it's just having your grand opening. Uh, and then you can even have a ribbon cutting after that or before that or whatever, but, um, but all of that doesn't have to happen on the same day, I think we were hoping that we could all do it all on the same day, but.
Could you do like a soft opening on the twenty-fourth of May and then do your regular on June?
I could tell you a lot, once we know the, once I can talk to them, once the dirt's been moved around and once they can tell me, hey, your grass, I, I would be more comfortable once I know what the condition of the ground's going to be, and until they actually get out there and move it, pack it, seed it, and see where it's at, I, I'm a little worried that it's not going to be ready in May, that, that would be my concern. But, uh, I do think it'll be ready in June, I just don't know if the grass is going to, they, they keep telling me you plant it in the spring, it doesn't land, you plant it in the fall if you want to. So, it, but I think the ground would be in better shape in June, to have people walking on it and everything. And I think the committee told me that. So it's up to you all, but again, I think next month we'll know a lot more, so I can tell you next month where we're going to be out with it. If you want to make that decision tonight, you can, if you want to wait till next month to make it official, just to see where we're at, it's up to you.
Add to the next day?
Yeah, it's not any, it's not any hurry, yeah, let's just wait till next month.
Okay. Eight, new business, A D A, consider approval of budget amendment for mall or community park.
Uh, yes, so we're doing a small budget amendment, we actually, last year, the playground mall that we put in at the Hill Grant Community Park, the Playstations, we actually didn't do that last year. Uh, so this year, what we went ahead and did is did two years work, but we only have one year budgeted, so we're coming back for a budget amendment. Uh, they like it because it's an A D A area, they like to keep it at a certain height, and so it, it was advisable this year to do, to do a little extra, so. Uh, staff does recommend approval and we do the motion, I think, to approve the amendment.
So you need a motion to approve the, uh, budget amendment?
Yes.
I'll make that motion. All in favor? Thank you. Eight B, consider approval of revolution leasing property for one year or less. And that's the rule, I guess, right?
Yeah, this is your typical, yes, this is Hill Grant Little League for the new concession building, so this is uh, basically the same as their existing, uh, resolutions, however, for this one, uh, and I have spoken with Chad Houston, who's over, uh, Hill Grant Little League, we do want to have some type of language and maybe for the next year, if you want to get more in depth on this, going from the next July to the next June thirtieth in our upcoming fiscal year for the new leases you can, but we wanted some type of language that allows us the, uh, uh, the authority to go in and use the concession stamp when we want for either a town event or some type of outside organization if they're doing something cosponsored with the town, to have access to it, and they're okay with that, so we have added that here. Um, uh, under whereas, the, it's the third whereas, county owner retains the right to use the concession building during town events. So, Jared, if you have anything in terms of additional language or?
We might feel like we're in the lease, uh, but other than that, that's, that's the gist of it. Now, I don't think this is going to be something that's going to happen very often, and I don't, we were just talking about giving the proximity, I don't know if it'll ever happen, but I think we want the opportunity, just in case. If you want to volunteer to work it, that's fine.
I have a question if I can ask, especially talking about the building, like, like the prisons, for example, like, do we have to give key for the restrooms when, when we have a cruise in, or how's that going to work?
They will be public restrooms, they'll be, they'll, so what we'll end up having to do from the town's point of view is add them into the contract with the Hill Grant Community Park for Delta, so it'll have to be a stop they make to open and close them, and we'll probably follow the same hours that's up there. So it'll be open for you.
They open and they, they unlock and they lock them?
They'll be open, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm just curious, thank you.
Alright, eight C, consider approval of location of H H D A cruising banners at Royal Park.
What's the, uh?
Did I not vote on something? Sorry, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the lease, lease property for one year or less. Alright, all in favor? Thank you. I don't know if I've been doing this. Okay.
Right, the banners that are in, speaking of, the banner we used to put on the front of the stage, that won't work because of the, the level of the stage now, so we're proposing, can we mount it on this, on the auditorium? If you're looking at the door to the right, there's a big, big brick wall on the gym. We're wanting to know if we can mount it there, the banners are all new and they'll be mounted in professional attitude. But that's the, that's the best point that we found, instead of staking them out in the grass or doing something silly, they'd be look good on that building and they're, everybody can see them, everybody can see, Rex is talking about putting the town one up top like we did over, over on this one, but the lower banner, we want to hang on that block, that brick wall, and it's an empty brick wall. We can put it high enough that everybody can see it, and then we have new banners, and then we have, we have four more sponsors this year. So we're, we're adding a smaller banner below that one, and then Synergy has their own banner, so it'll be three banners, three banners, but they'll all be in, in neat, and look, they'll look good when we get done. And Synergy, we're actually having a new, all the banners will be new, so, uh, they won't be trashy, and that way we can put them up, we can leave them up, the women won't have no problem with them because they'll be against the wall. And then at the end of the year, we can take it all down and put them away.
And how will they be, how will they be mounted, Billy?
I'm going to mount them with eye bolts.
So no damage to the wall?
Well, just drill a hole and put a molly, but other than that, there won't be, and I, I've done hundreds of them in the years, so, I mean, it'll be done professionally. So it won't be nothing, it'll damage the building, I hope it, and then even when we take the eyelets out, we could leave the eyelets in case somebody else wants to use them for any other event they have. And, uh, they'll be permanent, but I could take them out and just leave the molly in there, but if we just put the eye bolts in there like we're talking about, then anybody later on that has an event can use the same for the ankle points. And while I'm, while I'm talking, this is a flagpole mount, like you see there, on the stage, we have a year, we fly an American flag and the state flag on both sides of the, uh, stage, what we're asking for is can we mount these, one on each side of the pavilion on the outside of the post, not on the face, it'll be on the side, and mount these permanent, they're heavy duty, they're made out of metal, and then we'll put the flags up and take them down every car show. I mean, we could take, put them up, but physically, I think somebody will probably try to steal them, and they're high-quality flags, that we bought them in the flag store up here. And then these mounts will be permanent, and then we just put the flags in and take the flags down, but we're asking permission to install these. And they'll be installed professionally, I mean, it won't be, it won't be nothing anybody can rip off the wall either, they'll be there forever.
Okay, but that's, that's what we're asking.
And then, uh, just a couple of things real quick, we want to be able to put the hot dog stand where we had this gym last year, or where we had the stage last year, and leave it so we don't have to care, take it up, put it down, like we did last year, we have to put the whole car show, and then we took it down at the end of the year. Uh, and we're going to put it on this end where the old stage used to be. That way we can pick the tables in the shade, and they can kind of eat in the shade and still be in the shade, but still be able to see the pavilion from that angle. And then, um, asking about preserving the first row of parking on that back strip, uh, I'm going to have idiot accent signs make up signs saying, uh, reserved for classic cars, front row reserved for classic cars, to try to encourage them to, because I know what they're going to do, that a lot of them are going to park up here where they used to. To get them to encourage them to park down there, I'm going to have a sign made up saying, front row parking for reserved for classic cars. That way everybody kind of gets the point, then I brought it up briefly with Logan about some type of sails, like they have the sails in, uh, downtown, uh, Hickory on the pavilion, because if we don't, the sun's going to bake the band right out of there, especially coming from this angle. But there's some, like the sails they do in Hickory, we could put two or three sails on there and kind of block that sunlight, because by two or three o'clock in the afternoon, that sun's all on that stage, it'll bake the band right off the stage, I don't, I don't think it even, as hot as it would be June, July, and August, I don't even know, if we don't do something, they're not going to be able to set it up and not comfortably anyway, they'll be burned up, because that sun just shines just directly in there, but that's something we can.
The, yeah, in terms of the shed, the sail on the side, we can, we can look at something like that, I don't know the exact cost, but that's something we could look at and have put in by the end of May, if that's something council wants to do. Long term, I don't know how permanent you want to make them, but long term, the trees that are put in, don't ask me the name of those trees right now, but they're a type of tree that are supposed to grow somewhat speedy and should provide full coverage, but again, that ain't going to be this year, or maybe not next year.
I, I, I mean, I'm just thinking the sails too, will give it a really nice look, I mean, if you do it right, it's done professionally, but, and then I, we have a meeting Thursday, and I can discuss if they want to help pitch in to pay for the sails out of H H D A fund. That's it. Let them know, and I'll mention it at the meeting, you'll see how it goes.
Yeah, I can, I can, you know, this is the council's approval, if that's the way you want to go, I can reach out to companies that do the sales, and there, there's quite a few of them, so you would have, I, I definitely think it's an option, and that's something council wants to do, but it would be a possible budget amendment, just the next meeting or.
And then hopefully have it up by May.
Yeah, I would want to see an example before, would approve anything.
You want me to just try and bring that back next month, is what they look like, and one or two, couple of cost estimates for different companies? one or two couple of cost estimates for companies.
That'd be awesome. All right. Now, when you're talking about sales on the end of the pavilion, not front of it.
On the edge mostly, especially on this end where the sun comes across there. I I came three or four times the other day just to check on it. At about the time the band starts, there's only this much shade on that end of the stage, so the whole stage is just basically the sun. And I'm not too worried about May, but June, July, and August going to be approval, that we can have them up by May. I mean, that'd be nice to do.
This could be free to do like Town Hillbrand and
Yeah, sure.
Park or something like that on itself, if we don't make it a permanent part of it or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, if you plan on it, at least leave them for a couple, a couple, three years so those trees get.
Probably going to be about three years from what we were told before they
Yeah, if we get something, put Town Hillbrand on it or whatever, then that'd be great. But other than that, thank you for your time.
Okay, we're done on this.
Did you all want to look at this?
I wouldn't know what else.
There are these here.
It's sturdy.
But we have, yeah, then we have aluminum poles. We don't have the wood pole. We have aluminum poles. They're professional. We bought them at the flag place. And this is what it is, same as that. This is full staff, like you regularly fly the flag, but if you fly the flag at half mass, they go in here and it drops the flag to half mass, so. But they're heavy duty, they're not going anywhere. Once they're mounted, they're not going anywhere. And then I'll give it to you more than location or whatever.
Yeah, we can go out there. That's, yeah.
And one other question, talking about mounting banners on the gym, use an eyeball so you don't have like the eyes sticking outside the rig or?
No, 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 it'll be, it'll be.
You're talking about drilling it and putting shields in it?
Put a moly in it and then put an eyeball in it, and then the only thing you'll have is just attachment from the eyelet on the banner to the eyelet. And then they'll lay flat. They won't be flapping in the breeze because they'll be up against that wall. So, yeah, I think they'll look great, and that's a good spot for them. Everybody can see them no matter what angle you're at.
Okay, we've got motion and vote. Okay. I'd like a motion to approve the location of H H D A cruising banners at Royal Park. With, you know, looking at the samples or whatever coming in, but I don't know if we'd make a part of it without seeing them or not, but I'm not sure I'd make a motion.
Was that motion including the the flags? Was that, you were going to have on the stage?
Yes.
Was that including the flags or just the signage?
The banners and these. And then the rest, the sales and that we can wait on for another day.
I was asked, what's your, what's your motion?
For the banners on the building and the flags. And I like to, you know, I'm interested in the sale because, you know, I like to see something like Town Hillbrand, Royal Park, and stuff like that. But, you know, if they need to see sample of it.
So we're just voting on the flags and the banner. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You're going to have the concessions area, the tent, and the tables where? Where the old stage used to be, the board will have the concession stand. I don't know if you can throw that in there or not, but that's just permission to leave it up like we did last year. S B Hardware gives us the buckets that we hold them down with. We took bricks in them, so it can't go anywhere. Well, the hurricane made it move. Other than that, it stays pretty good. And then it's a brand new canopy and a brand new tarp, so the ice cream one we'll take down and put up every car show. But the hot dog one, it's twenty feet long. It's, it'll be brand new, but it'll be permanent till the last car show, and then we'll take it down.
Okay. I don't know that that needs to be part of the motion. It's just a
Okay.
Housekeeping. All right, let's go ahead and vote on Mark's motion. All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, was there any more discussion?
I'm just going to bring a sample or something for you to look at, so. He says something about H H D A, maybe he'll pay for them or something like that.
For the banners or for the sales?
For sales.
Okay.
With the freedom, I was thinking about our council going to Royal Park.
Then if you're just here with me or whatever, I'm going to mention it at the meeting Thursday, and if you figure out some kind of idea our next meeting will take it up, but I'm sure so.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, eight D, March Facilities Report. That is in your packet. I don't know if there's any questions there. Eight E, February Tax Report. Eight F, February Deputy Report. And then that brings us to committee reports. I'm sorry. Do I go too slow or too fast?
We meet Wednesday.
Okay, committee report, yes. Technical coordinating committee.
Uh, yeah, we meet Wednesday, and I can coordinate all the agenda. If you have questions, you can reach out to me.
Okay. What's your view on Council Government Policy Board?
Uh, meeting's tomorrow, the Burke Economic Development.
Uh, yes, on B D I, so the board uh, discussed an agreement allowing B D I to move twenty million from the Great Meadows property account into a separate uh, account for a spec building to be built at the Burke Business Park. So they're looking to move the funds uh, from the Great Meadows side to the Burke Business Park. Instead of doing utilities at the Meadows side, actually building an actual building at the Burke Business, the existing site for the Burke Business Park. Uh, with a thirty six month timeline for funds to be reimbursed, this extends the sunset date of the original Great Meadows grant to June thirty of twenty thirty, so it gives them a little extra time. Uh, housing prices continue to go up, multifamily housing costs continue to rise as well, making it difficult to uh, to build. Uh, we currently have a three month housing inventory, which is still less than I think it would like, it'd like to see a four to five month uh, inventory of housing. So we're still a little, still, still many more homes built is is the message. That's all I got.
Okay. Vic.
Hey, man, on February the twenty seventh at eleven thirty, the Valley's Town Hall, the meeting was called order by Marla Thompson. Kerry gave a financial overview. The annual audit was completed and showed interest income was up two point five percent from last year. The board approved the resolution to apply for our big grant for a hundred seventy five thousand dollars. The grant that they had already applied for the A R C is still pending. Eddie reviewed the deliberate report, several loans have been paid off. There are eight to ten loans in the pre-loan process. Eddie stays in touch, contact with all the clients. One new loan for twenty thousand dollars was approved by the board with a client to receive coaching. The board took a tour of the new offices and the old rock schools that were very nice. The next meeting will be this Thursday on March the twenty seventh at Old Rock School.
Okay, the library board will meet tomorrow. The events committee.
Yes, and I, or, yeah, earlier tonight, we actually talked about the the Easter egg hunt that is planned for two thirty uh, P M, and I don't have the date right in front of me.
April the twelfth.
April the twelfth. Anyone who wants to volunteer or be part of it, I'm counsel more than welcome to. We'll have three areas like in the past. Area one for the young, young children, area two for uh, four to seven, and then area three for eight to eleven. Okay. Uh, we're looking at signage, um, doing some advertising for it, and it will happen rain or shine. And if it rains like it did last year, we will move it to the uh, freeway in between the community center and the auditorium. Anything else?
My best friend.
I think there's Easter egg signs in your new stores area we made. I think I saw them somewhere.
Uh, are we talking about in the auditorium?
In the museum. That room that we moved all your stuff and we put them shelves in there for you guys.
So there may be some.
I thought that's where I saw them.
Was there anything we were missing that we normally have?
I don't know. I've got a list of the signs that we made that we're going to give Wendell, so y'all can go over and see if there's any signs that you have and mark up, and this is what we need.
You want to do that next Monday, maybe if you're off next Monday?
I'll give this to you, cause Wendell wants it.
I probably ain't got no sense.
I ain't got no double name.
Yes, I do have sense. Uh, okay, other business. Logan, the update on ordinances?
Yeah, so last month, you guys had asked me to look into some ordinances for for data mining and things of that nature. The planning board is planning to discuss it this upcoming Tuesday. If you'd like to attend and see what their discussions are, and then we plan to have uh, or we, you know, depending on how that goes and what their discussions are, we could have something back here next month uh, to look at. That's all I got.
Okay. Any other business? Uh, Sonia Scott has some cast iron fountains that were located on the outside of the old school building.
Sonia, stand up.
She would like to offer those to the town if we can use them anywhere in the new park?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Uh, the Mount Hebrew Church is having an Easter egg hunt also. Uh, I don't know if it will be acceptable, but have that on the side or not, since there's some discrepancy on who's allowed things on there and who's not. Uh, maybe at the next meeting, we can clear some of that up.
And what, yeah, if you, and I don't know if everyone's been made aware of it, but since we had the, the thing about bringing up new business not at the meeting, normally I would probably just bring it up and talk to you, but after um, last November or whenever it was. Uh, if that's something council wants to discuss, just, and I would actually probably add some clarification on it as well, because the way it reads, um there's some things we've put on the sign in the past that I don't know if we continue to put unless there's additional clarification or some changes made, so that's something you all want to discuss next month. Okay. Yeah.
If we get copies of it, I've never seen.
The, the, the policy for it, yes, yes, that's what.
Wendell, do they have to vote on the fountains?
Do we have to vote?
Well, we did, yeah, it would be, we'd have to figure out where to put them, what the plumbing requirements are, and then probably do a vote. Just to see where to put them. Is there anywhere in terms of a location that, or a couple of locations, just plumbing wise, you would, you would think that'd work out better or not? In terms of the aesthetics that we can look into, or are you just?
Well, there's plumbing to the concession stand. We might want to look at that.
There, and there's currently two fountains there. These two, do you want on the other side? Are you looking to add to a specific spot? Really, not on the other spot. There is, I think, some plumbing run on the outside of the side that faces the uh, ball fields, first street. So you might could put them there unless you want to, I don't know how much space is in the existing side where the current water fountains are. I think you have restrooms also on that side, three different restrooms.
It'd be nice to have them where they can be seen, like.
They're about eighty years old.
At least.
Isn't that the ones that run the outside?
They're more than eighty years old.
They're probably older than eighty.
Because they were here for now, didn't they?
They're cast iron.
Yeah.
The company's still in business today. They sell the same fountain. So you can get parts for them if you want to use them, but now that has to be a code.
Do they, yeah, do they need to be refurbished in any way like?
If you want them to look eighty years old, get them. I wouldn't do a thing to them, but if you want, you can buy parts for them while the pedals is gone. So.
All right, do we need to vote on it? Can we just accept it?
We, I mean, you just want to direct staff to look into where we can do it and what the cost would be to implement them and then bring that back to you.
That sounds good. Okay. Yes, that's for whatever it means to you.
Yes, yeah, just to send them their, their, you know, safe.
They'd nice to have something original.
All right, any other business? Any announcements? Okay, there's just one thing left to do. I'd like to have a motion to the tour. All in favor? Thank you.